Recording in progress.
Welcome to the special meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, September 12th. Our regular meeting at 7:00 PM has been canceled due to the 6:00 PM start time of this special meeting. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Abner is absent. Vice Chair Patel?
Here.
Commissioner Nugent?
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
It is noted that Commissioner Williams is joining remotely from the office of 181 Sandpoint Road, Bar Harbor, Maine, 04609, where an agenda has also been posted. Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those who are attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes, however, that is subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
Vice Chair Patel, no one is wishing to public comment at this time.
Great, then we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Next is new business. Item one is the draft environmental impact report, general plan 2040 and climate action plan 2023 technical update. We'll start with a staff presentation, clarifying questions from the commission, and then public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. Once the public comment period is closed, the commission will deliberate and provide comments and input to staff. This item is a public meeting to allow the public and the commission to learn more about the general plan's draft environmental impact report and provide verbal comments, but no formal action will be taken, and the public comment period for the draft EIR will remain open until September 25th, 2023. And with that, I think we can move to the staff presentation.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Zach Dahl, interim director for community development with the City of San Mateo, and I'm also joined here this evening with Steve Noack, principal with Placeworks, our lead consultant for the general plan update in preparation of the environmental impact So the item before you this evening is the draft environmental impact report for our draft general plan. So for this evening, we are recommending that the commission receive the staff presentation, hear public comments and testimony, and then provide impact input on the draft environmental impact report. And we do want to note that no formal action will be taken on the draft EIR at this evening's meeting. In terms of an overview of our presentation, we'll start with an overview of the draft general plan, the technical update to the climate action plan, which is part of this project, an overview of our community outreach, and then an overview of what is in the draft environmental impact reports, and then we'll wrap up with next steps in the process. Where are we right now? We have been at this for a little over five years, and so we are now in the draft general plan phase of the process. The draft general plan was published in July. The draft environmental impact report was published in August, and we're currently in the outreach and engagement phase with a goal to bring this before city council in October. This keeps us on target to have a final environmental impact report and general plan ready for adoption beginning of 2024. I do want to highlight our online resources for the environmental impact report. If you go to strive-sanmateo.org, you can find the draft document as well as notices and all public comments that have been received. So the draft general plan 2040, which is what the EIR is studying, has been an ongoing effort, and it will be the city's blueprint for the next 20 years through 2040. And I do want to highlight the available resources online for the draft general plan, and this includes the draft documents as well as user guides, big ideas, an online, an interactive commenting tool, as well as an interactive land use map, FAQs, and much more. So depending on what your interests are, there's hopefully resources to help understand and facilitate greater knowledge of what is in the draft general plan when you visit our strive-sanmateo.org. In terms of the draft general plan, it is focused around seven primary elements or chapters, with the housing element also one of the elements in the general plan being prepared and adopted separately. In addition to those elements, we also have three key themes, which in some cases can be addressed as elements, but we have chosen to interweave them throughout the entire general plan to highlight just how interconnected these three topics are with many of the other topics in the other elements of the general plan. And this includes sustainability, environmental justice, and community engagement, which is really focusing on a comprehensive approach for ongoing community engagement with the city. And so that does bring us to a little bit more information about what we have been doing as part of our outreach and engagement efforts. Kind of the feature of this outreach and engagement phase are five district town hall meetings located around the city, which started at the end of August and run through the end of September. And the goal is to bring these meetings to neighborhoods, close to neighborhoods for everyone around the city, and give everyone an opportunity to engage and learn more, as well as collect feedback and engage with staff and decision makers. We've been also doing a variety of direct community engagement activities. This includes multiple citywide mailers, both a newsletter and meeting notice, a virtual workshop that we held in August, the five district town hall meetings that I just mentioned, six public meetings, which started with our general plan subcommittee, the planning commission here this evening, as well as later this month, and then three city council meetings in October. We also have been doing presentations to various community groups. We've provided self-guided open house displays at various city facilities. We've been doing pop-up events at other city events and other events around the city to highlight the availability of this document, and then a variety of e-blasts and other social media postings. In terms of our public meeting series, as noted, we started with our general plan subcommittee. We're now coming before the Planning Commission, both this evening and later this month, and then we'll be moving forward to council to receive direction and input on each of the elements, including the EIR, in the draft general plan. And then that puts us on track to then come back with a final document that is ready for adoption beginning of 2024. And also highlighting again how to provide feedback on the draft general plan. You can do it directly into the document. If you go to the draft general plan resources page, and we have a convio document where you can drop a note on any page to align with where your interests or comments lie, and then you can always submit comments to us at our generalplan@cityofsanmateo.org email. And then highlighting for comments on the EIR, draft EIR, they are due by the end of the day on September 25th. Also as part of this project, we do have a technical update to our climate action plan. This was necessary to ensure that the document remained as a qualified greenhouse gas emission reduction strategy, and needed to be updated to align with the updated projections and horizon in our draft general plan. And this was also an opportunity to update the baselines. So as you can see, our climate action plan was first prepared in 2015, and then we updated it again in 2020. We do want to highlight this is a technical update that, as I noted, incorporates a new 2019 GHD emission inventory, and then updates the forecast to align with the draft general plan, and then also other more recent state and regional and local actions. And then it would ensure that it stays as a qualified greenhouse gas emission reduction strategy. We do want to highlight that the overall commitments in GHD reductions remains the same. There's no substantial changes to the reduction strategies, and there is no change to our implementation approach as well. So this is really a technical update to ensure consistency with our updated general plan. However, because we needed to make this update, it is specifically included in the project description for our draft environmental impact report. So moving on to the draft environmental impact report, we want to start with the project description. This is a programmatic level document as opposed to a project-specific environmental impact report, and so there's a number of key differences when you look at a programmatic level as opposed to a project level. And so we'll get into those in more detail as we go through the draft EIR. But overall, there are two main components that are covered in this EIR analysis. One is the draft general, is the general plan 2040. That includes the land use map, build outs, as well as an analysis of the goals, policies, and actions contained within the general plan. And then, as was just noted, covering the technical update to our climate action plan. So the EIR study area, this not to be confused with our 10 study areas within the city, this is the area, this sets the parameters for what is studied within the EIR. And so what we want to highlight is this includes both the city limit as well as our sphere of influence or unincorporated areas. And so you can see those are two areas. One is the country club along Highway 92, and then we have our county unincorporated area in the Highlands, which is to the west of the city, west of 92, and San Mateo College. And then we do want to note that the analysis in the EIR requires both spatial and quantitative inputs in order to fully analyze. So we just want to highlight, in terms of spatial analysis, it is based on the land use map that went into the 2040 general plan, and includes both the city limits and our sphere of influence to make up that study area. So moving specifically to the growth projections, this is the quantitative piece, what is the project build out? And so in 2040, the EIR is evaluating a build out that includes an addition of a little over 21,000 housing units and around 16,900 new jobs. And so in this case, we are now moving to the 10 study areas within the City of San Mateo, and as has been discussed throughout the general plan update process, we have focused our growth and change within these 10 study areas. And these areas are characterized as being in proximity to transit, services, and jobs, and have areas or contain properties and buildings that are aging, vacant, or not maintained and/or underutilized. And we do want to highlight of the build out projection numbers on the previous slide, 92% of the new housing units and 89% of the new jobs are contained within these 10 study areas. And so what that highlights is that for the rest of the city, we are looking to maintain existing land use categories, and so while there will be incremental and very modest change in growth over this horizon, it will be primarily focused within the 10 study We also want to highlight a specific policy within the land use element, which highlights how will we be monitoring growth outlined within, contained within, or planned for within general plan 2040, and ensuring consistency with the EIR over time. And so you can see here, we've highlighted the specific threshold of the 21,400 new dwelling units and have taken that job projection number and converted it to square footage as our total non-residential floor area, which we anticipate a growth ceiling by 2040. And so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn the mic over to Steve Noack to walk us through the draft environmental impact report.
Thank you, Zach. So I'm going to provide, let's see, overview of the California Environmental Quality Act, and then we'll get into the findings of the EIR itself. The CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, it's the state's primary environmental protection law. An EIR is an informational document. It's a disclosure document that discloses potential physical effects of a project on the environment. If there are effects that are identified, it includes mitigation measures, and also describes feasible alternatives to try to avoid those identified impacts. The EIR is the highest level of review document under CEQA, and it's important to note that CEQA does not dictate project denial or approval. Again, the EIR is a disclosure document, and it's really disclosing the findings of fact-based analysis, and it's something that's certified by the governing body. It's not approved, but it's certified as accurate and correct. But again, it does not dictate project approval or denial. And for a general plan, we prepared a program-level EIR, and this is really appropriate when a project consists of a series of actions relating to issuing rules, regulations, and plans with the potential to affect the environment. It does not evaluate site-specific impacts of projects. So perhaps you all have seen EIRs come before you that focus on specific projects, and they're very detailed in that level of analysis. This is a much higher level analysis that looks at the project kind of in its entirety, using the build out numbers that Zach presented as kind of the guide for what you could call the maximum level of potential impact. The EIR allows future project-level environmental review to tier off of the program EIR, and this is important in terms of helping to facilitate projects as they come through after the general plan is approved and the EIR is certified. And it really helps to streamline future environmental review procedures. And in terms of addressing environmental impacts, when an impact is identified, CEQA requires that the impact be avoided, minimized, rectified, reduced, or eliminated or compensated. So there's a series of exercises that we go through when we identify potential impacts to try to look at ways to reduce or minimize the impact to the greatest degree possible. And CEQA allows the general plan to incorporate mitigation measures as goals, policies, and actions designed to protect environmental resources. And along those lines, this is a list of predominantly all of the thresholds that are part of the CEQA guidelines, the Appendix G checklist. And as you can see, there were very few impacts that were found to be significant. Most impacts were reduced to less than significant level or no impacts at all because of the policies in the plan itself that address these issues in a proactive way. So future developers would see the policies and understand what they must go through in order to avoid impacts in those categories. The impacts that were identified as significant and unavoidable include air quality, noise, and wildfire. And air quality, a lot of the determination here is because we're looking at, you know, not totally certain on the types of development that would occur over time or where they would occur, other than we know they're within the targeted growth areas. And so it's fairly difficult to try to pinpoint impacts at a site-specific level. So the findings focused on looking at it holistically, as I said, and found significant and unavoidable impacts in terms of construction itself, operational impacts, consistency with the Bay Area air quality management, planning documents, and MTC ABAG planning documents, and then also looking at cumulative impacts as well. So we did look at the gamut of potential impacts and determined that these were at the programmatic level would be considered significant and unavoidable. Did I skip one? Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. So in terms of the other significant unavoidable impacts, one was noise, and this was really based on finding for one roadway segment that traffic noise generated by future growth under the general plan would result in an increase of more than 5 dBEL over existing conditions, which would be considered a significant impact. Also, overall, traffic would result in unacceptable cumulative conditions, again, over the life of the EIR, of the general plan EIR. In terms of wildfire, although there is no specific targeted development or new development occurring in the areas that are designated as wildfire zones, the fact is that there are still homes and buildings there, and over time, there could be changes to land uses in those areas, and basically finding that, you know, any changes, any additional homes would also be, would also be subject to the wildfire risk as are existing homes in the areas, and thereby would exacerbate risks. And then also, in looking at cumulative impacts, it was determined that the project would result in cumulative wildfire impact. In terms of cumulative findings, cumulative impacts account for development under the proposed project in addition to other development that could cause an impact on the physical environment. And there are times when you may find less than significant impacts at a project level, but potentially significant impacts at a cumulative level. In this, for this study, for this EIR, the general plan itself was evaluated in this context of citywide cumulative impacts, because the general plan is the blueprint for development through 2020-40. And the DEIR found cumulative impacts, again, in the same areas, air quality, noise, The EIR also looked at alternatives, and that's required by CEQA, looking at a reasonable range of alternatives that would attain most of the project objectives, but really would be intended to avoid or substantially lessen any of the project's significant effects. CEQA requires that one of the alternatives include a no-project alternative. In this case, that would be considered continued growth and activity and development under the current general plan. And then the second alternative would be a reduced traffic noise alternative, given that one impact on roadway noise over the course of the project. The no-project alternative, again, would be the general plan is maintained. It would include housing to achieve the 2023 to 2031 regional housing needs allocation plus a buffer. So it would include the existing housing element that was assumed as part of the no-project, but overall build out is lower than for the proposed general plan 2020-40. The reduced traffic noise alternative was intended to reduce traffic noise to reduce the project's significant and unavoidable traffic noise, and it would include ways to reduce traffic through enhanced transportation demand programs and increasing funding for other modes of transportation, including bicycle and pedestrians. But overall, the would include the same build out as analyzed for general plan 2020-40. And in terms of the conclusions, for the no-project alternative, the EIR concluded that the no-project alternative would not fully accompany any of the project objectives set forth in the general plan and in the EIR, and it would result in greater impacts to many of the topics analyzed in the EIR, and would also, but it would result in lessened impacts to geology and soils, hazards, parks, and recreation and public services. This is due somewhat to the reduced footprint of this alternative compared to the general plan, EIR. The reduced traffic noise alternative would meet some, but not all of the project objectives, and it would result in lessened impacts to air quality, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, planning, noise, and transportation. Would be considered the environmentally superior alternative as defined by CEQA. For EIRs where we do find impacts are significant and unavoidable, well, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead here. The alternatives considered but not analyzed include air quality, and that is because the only way to avoid the impact would be to reduce development, and this would conflict with objectives to meet current and future housing needs. And in a project, as a program-level EIR without details, it's very difficult to determine precisely how to avoid this impact. And I will note that on a project level, it's more typical than not that you find less than significant impacts regarding air quality. So, you know, additional analysis would be done on a site-specific basis, and again, it depends on the project, on the citing and whatnot. But typically, we are able to look at less than significant impacts with mitigation for air quality. In terms of wildfire, the only way to avoid this impact would be to remove the existing development in the high fire hazard severity zones and prohibit future activity in order to reduce the increased risk of wildfire from human activity. As I started to say before, in order to certify the EIR, the city can approve the project with significant and unavoidable impacts by adopting a statement of overriding considerations, which essentially notes, it provides kind of a guideline as to how the project's benefits outweigh potential impacts. This would include providing affordable housing, reducing overall per capita VMT, and supporting local businesses. And this must be included in the record of project approval. So this would be part of the resolutions for certification of the EIR itself. And with that, I'll turn it over to Zach to talk about next steps.
Thank you, Steve. So as noted here, right now, this is the process for preparing and adopting an environmental impact report. So that started with the notice of preparation and a scoping meeting, which we completed in the beginning of 2022, and analysis and identification of environmental impacts. And so that was what culminated in the publication of the draft environmental impact report in early August. And we're currently in that 45-day public comment period. Once that comment period wraps up, we'll then move into updating the EIR based on the input received and provide responses to all comments that were received. We'll then move forward with our adoption hearings, which are slated for the beginning of 2024, starting with the Planning Commission, and then ultimately going to the City Council for consideration of the general plan and certification of the final environmental impact report. So that kind of tees us into next steps, near term, where we are. We're in the middle of the EIR's public review period, which wraps up on September 25th. And then we'll be coming back to Planning Commission for a second meeting focused on the draft general plan, and then moving to City Council in October, and then moving forward for EIR, final EIR certification and general plan adoption in the first quarter of 2024. I just want to also highlight the different ways that members of the public can comment on the draft EIR. In addition to our general email, you can also email our planning manager, Manera Sandir, or submit a written comment here at City Hall or in the mail. And then we must receive that comment by September 25th in order to provide a formal response in the final EIR. So for tonight's meeting, we would, we would highlight that the project merits would probably be best discussed at our next meeting when we talk about the general plan. And so for tonight, focusing on content analysis and conclusions of the draft environmental impact report, knowing that then those comments will be addressed as part of the final EIR. And so this does conclude staff's presentation, and we now are available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. So we'll turn it over to the members of the Planning Commission for any clarifying questions. And, you know, clarifying questions, I think, at this point are about sort of specific things that we've read in the draft EIR. So I think, you know, getting clarification on whatever the text is, is the intent of this section, and then we can hold discussion around those questions until the discussion period. So is it okay if I start with you, Commissioner Wiggins?
Through the chair or through the vice chair? Yes. And thank you for kind of scoping us on this. I still have a lot of questions, but I will try to focus on just the quickest, driest clarification-y ones. A general one, and I'll say, let me just, my most general question is, just to pick up on something, interim director Dahl, that you put at the end of the presentation about focusing comments on the EIR versus the general plan. I've been trying to keep up with all the public comment that I've seen come in, and it's often described as being EIR comments and input. But when I read it, it actually is talking about the general plan, where it's not tying to standards of significance or findings of significant, you know, where you find yourself in. So just my highest clarifying question is, if I have a comment or even a question about what's in the general plan, that's sort of a separate sphere from the EIR unless I, my question is, why did the EIR analyze the general plan in a certain way? For example, do you follow what I'm getting at there? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Steve. So whenever we receive these comments, it's natural you're going to get overlap, because obviously, the general plan is the project, and then the EIR is analyzing that project. And so what we do is oftentimes, we'll look at it in both lenses. But then, if it's more policy or maybe a discussion on the merits of a given policy or an approach, that isn't necessarily going to be responded to within the context of the EIR.
Thank you. And just build on that, the thing that jumps out to me about the framework of the approach that the EIR takes is that we're seeking to disclose impacts. And it's maybe not an impact the way you or I would think of it. It's an impact related to a threshold for significance, if I understand correctly. So when I look at it, if we're, for the air quality, for noise, those are being flagged as significant and unavoidable because they've crossed a threshold for significance. And so I just wanted to ask, just kind of a general question, how are those standards, you know, that threshold? How is that, who decides that? How do you decide what that threshold is?
It really depends on the topic, but for air quality, that's an easy one, because it's the Bay Area Air Quality Management District that sets thresholds for both programmatic evaluation as well as project-level evaluation. So those bright-line thresholds come from BACMUD. Other thresholds are, noise, again, is one that the city can adopt standards, and then there are also FHWA standards as well that are used. And typically, we do define the threshold levels in the analysis itself. In general, the other thresholds, some are more on the qualitative side, but they're all in the Appendix G environmental Checklist in the SEQA Guidelines themselves. And so that's really what we go by.
Thank you. One other high-level general question, when I read the document, I keep trying to focus on the impact of the project on the environment versus the impact of the environment on the project. Is that always, every time we look at this, that's always like a north star, right? We're trying to understand what this project does to the environment, not the other way around?
That's correct. And that's a result of a court case a few years ago that really made that clarification. SEQA does just look at the impacts of the project itself on the environment.
Thank you. Through the chair, I would like the opportunity to scour my other questions, to find any other generals, and give other commissioners a chance to ask questions.
Great. Can I move on to Commissioner Wiggins?
Sure, through the chair. So I'm looking, first, I want to ask about greenhouse gas emissions. It looks like the greenhouse gas emissions would be lower for the city if it adopts the general plan update in the climate action plan update versus the current status quo general plan and climate action plan. Am I right in reading that? Is that, okay. And then, since the EIR study area is only the city limits in its sphere of influence land near 280, would it be reasonable to assume that there would perhaps be even greater greenhouse gas emissions regionally at the same amount of growth? Would otherwise, that's projected in the general plan update, were to concur, say, on the periphery of the region and result in more people commuting? Is that something that's factored in?
Yes, that's correct. There's a direct correlation between vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. So if you took the growth and moved it out into the hinterlands, then you are going to have longer travel trips and resulting in higher greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay, and is that what's driving the analysis that showed that greenhouse gas emissions would be lower with this new general plan versus the old? Is that like the main factor?
That's correct. With the addition of jobs and housing and with the potential to reduce travel trips, work, home-to-work travel trips is really what that's based on.
Okay, thank you. My next question, my other questions are around noise. And just, this one is to help me understand, what is the difference between unacceptable traffic noise and unacceptable cumulative traffic noise? For instance, with noise one, of the unmitigated aspects, it says, "Buildout under the proposed project is anticipated to result in unacceptable traffic noise with an increase of more than 5 dB over existing conditions along First Avenue west of B Street," which is a small section of town. But then there's also the comment from noise six, that it affects, that unacceptable cumulative traffic noise affects all study areas. So can you help me understand what the difference is between those two things?
I'm actually going to ask one of our consultants, Seth, who's online, to respond to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll look for a thumbs up that my voice is making it to you. Great, well, that's a great question. And the real simple answer is, there's no difference. They're essentially the same. As a function of SEQA, we're required to analyze cumulative impacts. In this case, what the analysis is dealing with is traffic noise. It's a regional traffic forecast, dealing with, you know, traffic in the future. And so it was a project-level impact, and then kind of by a technicality, it's also a cumulative impact. So in a way, you could think of them as one significant and unavoidable, but due to the protocols of SEQA, it turns into two.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then the other question I have is, compared to the status quo, is it also expected that traffic noise would increase, it would increase more or less if we were to follow the status quo, say, with increased commuters driving in? Is that, yeah, how does that compare to the status quo? Like, if we're projecting for the update versus the current general plan?
So are you saying, are you saying the difference between more aggressive measures to get people out of cars and reduce vehicle traffic compared to status quo of?
No, that's going to be my next question. Yeah, so I'm talking about the no-project alternative.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Can you answer that, Seth?
Yeah, let me gather myself with that. It's, yeah, with the proposed project and the general plan, it is, you know, with the land use scheme, it is increasing population. And with that increase comes the increase in traffic. And so just by that nature, and this could be under the current general plan too, I mean, you know, as the future goes on, growth occurs, and that growth is what really pushes the increased traffic noise. So to sum it back up, the proposed general plan does increase population or is projected to, based on the land use plan proposed, and that increase increases population and therefore, traffic in the future. I can't, I believe that the current, that the proposed general plan does allow for more population than the current, but I'm not positive on that.
I believe so. I believe that that is what's been shown, just in the numbers that are provided for the general plan update, that it does provide for more population growth than the current general plan. I guess the question is, that I have is, is the traffic noise, would it also go up without the adoption of the general plan update? And would it go up? Like, how would that compare?
That's tougher, because you, it really depends on which projects would come under the existing general plan. If you had a project that's, you know, close to Caltrain mixed-use project, where it's really designed to minimize automobile use, then that would reduce, you know, result in less than significant noise impacts. The, overall, though, the build-out of the, if you look at the build-out of the existing general plan, because it's less, you may not have the same specific segment impact that we're looking at in a 40-year period. So it's a little bit apples and oranges, but basically, you are, you would have growth. You could have cumulative noise impacts under development in the existing general plan as well. But in general, because you do have more activity, more housing, more, more jobs, more commercial area, under the proposed general plan, you are going to have higher levels of traffic, although, you know, everybody's trying to reduce those numbers, but they're still going to be higher overall. So, but I don't think we can really say whether or not the, without modeling, whether or not continued growth under the existing general plan would result in the same impact or not.
Okay, okay. And that modeling isn't done for this? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's a helpful answer. And then my last comment, or my last question about noise is, what kind of goals, policies, and actions could we add or modify to achieve the reduced traffic noise alternative? So say, we've got this reduced traffic noise alternative as an option in the EIR, how could that inform potential changes for our actual general plan update?
I would need, I would need to go back and look at the actual, the noise element and what the conditions are to be able to address that, because, I mean, my assumption is that this general plan is really looking to maximize the benefits of getting people out of cars. So I don't know if there would be anything that could be added, you know, based on that alternative itself that's not already in the plan itself.
Okay. I mean, it seems, so.
Well, sorry to interrupt you. We did talk about, it would require increased transportation demand management actions.
Yes.
So there would need to be more aggressive actions, where, you know, you require payment for parking, you pay people to take transit, you provide free transit passes, and other things that can, you know, prove to be beneficial in that way. So I guess it would be, what you're really asking is, increasing the TDM policies or requirements, would that result in, it would result in reduced traffic, because that's how we identified that alternative as a feasible alternative. But the thing is, it does, in that case, the alternative didn't meet all the objectives or the other standards in the general plan itself. That's why, you know, although it's identified as environmentally superior, it still doesn't provide all of the benefits of the plan or the project as it's currently defined in the project description.
And just building on that quickly, I think the TDM piece is worth noting on, because there are policy choices to be made about how aggressive that is and the associated costs that go with those. Because as you get more aggressive, the cost to achieve those TDMs becomes significantly more. And so that's the policy piece, about what is realistic and feasible to achieve, and how much money and do we want to put toward that effort. I think the other piece is, this is a programmatic level analysis as opposed to a project-specific analysis as individual projects come forward. And that's where, at a programmatic level, because we don't have a lot of site-specific details, we don't know exactly where these projects are going to occur in and around San Mateo, but once we have those projects, we have a much higher degree of ability to focus in and mitigate impacts and then reduce the actual traffic noise that could result from that project.
Okay. Yeah, no, this is helpful, because the thing that I'm curious is, because we're looking at our TDM measures, and that's something that's ongoing. And so if we had, if we knew, like, what menu of options would be most effective at mitigating traffic noise, I think it would be helpful for decision-makers, just as a city. So if that's something that we can flesh out. So I don't want to get too much into a comment. But again, thank you for answering those questions. Yeah, those are. Yeah, those are all the questions that I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. One relates to this idea of development projections, and I just want to get a little clarification on whether or not what the specifics are. So I'm looking at page 502 of the packet, and it talks about the projections. And it says, "The projections do not presume that every parcel is developed to the maximum level allowed under the general plan. Based on historical development patterns, it's unlikely the maximum buildout allowed would occur, blah, 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 blah." And so what, so clear to me what projection was, is generally used for the EIR. It says that analytics is a conservative but reasonable foreseeable amount of growth. Is there a specific?
Yeah, I will say I was not involved in developing the buildout numbers, but usually we look at, you know, the targeted growth areas, we do a pretty detailed review of the growth potential within each of those areas, and then we make an assumption about the amount of development that would actually occur, because you're not going to have, you know, as you pointed out, you're not going to have every parcel be developed over the course of the general plan within those areas. So again, you know, it's a little bit, we, it's speculative in the sense that we, we have a sense of the rate of development, we have a sense of what will occur where, but you certainly scale it back, so you're not looking at 100% development. So it's really just a, the numbers that you see are based on that whole process of determining buildout based on land use and characteristics of the sites, et cetera. But if, they wouldn't be 100% of the yield of development, I guess, within those areas.
Yeah, and just kind of adding on that, we are looking at a 20-year growth horizon here. I mean, obviously, the city is going to continue to exist and grow and change much longer than that, and so many of the properties in here may choose not to change during this period, others will, others may change, but not to maybe the maximum potential that could be allowed under that given land use category. So those are all factors that go into the projection, but clearly, this is an estimate. As the, as actual development occurs, as actual change occurs, that's where the tracking mechanism comes in, we continue to monitor, and then as we get closer to that 2040 horizon, and maybe as some of those thresholds near, that's where maybe then we need to reevaluate. Or at a point, would a project no longer be able to tier off of this environmental analysis? So yeah, we have to factor all of the pieces that Steve mentioned in, and then make estimates based on other trends and other factors' capacities of what could potentially occur in this 20-year horizon window.
Yeah, I guess it's just a little bit confusing, because, I mean, there's a table, and there's information, I mean, it's a description, this city has identified sites to accommodate an additional 2020 units to meet the RENA allocation of 7,000 units by 2030. Anyway, I guess it's not, to me, what the, like, how the projections relate to the maxims, I guess, or to the RENA numbers could be a little bit more clear to me? They're not, it's not that clear.
So you're asking, like, what is the pure maximum capacity under this land use map? And then how does this relate to, say, our current RENA allocation through 2031? Or is that?
Yeah, right. And it's sort of two separate comparisons of these projected numbers versus those, yeah, there's two separate things. And I don't know if that's clarified in there.
We don't have, like, pure maximum capacity numbers, because that's a very theoretical number, and I think is equally, so what we focus on is more what is realistically or feasibly achievable by 2040. And then similarly, we were factoring in that within our 20-year horizon, we would have two and a half RENA cycles. And so the goal was to plan for a potential, the current allocation as well as the next one and a half allocations, to ensure that this general plan land use map would have the capacity to accommodate future housing projections as required by the state without having to reamend the general plan. So that was kind of how we were looking at it, but obviously, we don't know what the next RENA allocation will hold, what kind of numbers will, will be provided by the state. And so we're estimating, and then we would have to adjust if needed, once those numbers are actually assigned and we need to move forward with planning.
Okay. Okay, that's sort of helpful. Let me just see if I had another question. Some of these are really more comments, I'll hold on those. Well, I had a kind of very specific question, I guess, about, I noted it here on page 783, this diagram of the flooding, and it was sort of, there's a large area that says it's protected by a levee, and I, because I wanted to just confirm that, see if I'm understanding that correctly. Just find that, what did I say that was, 703? It was a diagram. Ah, let's see. I had it wrong. 783. Yeah, I know it's really specific, kind of in the weeds, but. So it says levee-protected areas. So are they currently, is, oh, you know what? I think I've actually got that clarified now, but I look at it again, I don't really have a question about that now. Okay, let me just see if I had any other questions. I think that's it. Yeah, I think other items were sort of answered in your presentation.
I would just note that if you would like more of a detail or a written response to your questions about the buildout projections, I encourage you to submit that as part of the comments on the draft EIR.
Okay. Okay, great, thanks. That's all the questions I have.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of questions that are really in the weeds, so I think I'm going to hold off until the discussion section to ask them, but I wanted to ask one of them now, because it piggybacks off a question that Commissioner Nugent asked. So we have these two significant impacts on noise, noise dash one and noise dash six. And I was curious why TDM measures aren't listed as a potential mitigation, mitigation strategy for those two significant impacts? Because we have TDM policies and actions, and so I was just curious why we weren't citing them in those significant impacts as a potential mitigation.
I would say that basically, the implementation of the TDM programs, you know, as removing, with the intent of removing vehicles from the roadway, encouraging other forms of transportation, provides that benefit. But typically, when you're looking at impacts, direct impacts from noise, you're really looking more at the, the physical nature of the project and its exposure, and, you know, looking at ways to offset the noise intrusion to the project itself. So one is more of a, an overall benefit, reducing noise of traffic, but then, usually that would not be considered a noise mitigation per se.
I see.
It would be, noise mitigation, again, would focus on reducing site-specific impacts.
I see. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I think that's the only question I'm going to ask right now, but I want to toss it back to Commissioner Wiggins to see if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, Commissioner Nugent started to, just about the alternatives a little bit. The noise, the noise alternative, oh, sorry, let me just start with the, something that I think relates to air quality and noise. So when I look at the project alternatives, it shows the no-project alternative, and it shows the, the reduced noise alternative, and I think it shows sort of chapter by chapter, aesthetics, biology, whatever, would the impacts be greater or lesser? And I noticed that, if I'm looking at it right, for, for air quality, the no-project has even worse impacts than the proposed project? Is that, am I reading that right? Or?
Yeah, I would need to go look, but that makes sense. I mean, I could see that. We do have an air quality, we have, Lance is available to answer that question as well.
I could have follow-up, so if Lance is around, you know, that'd be good, but.
Okay. Lance, are you there?
Yes. Hi, thank you for, for having us. My name is Lance Bark, I'm a senior air quality scientist in Placeworks. You know, I, I don't have a great answer for you specifically for how the alternatives chapter is laid out, what kind of conditions would create a greater impact. But typically, for, for plan-level analyses, when we see a greater impact for a no-project alternative, it typically has to do with the land use designations and where you have different receptors in proximity to different emission sources, specifically toxic air contaminant sources. So things that have permitted stationary sources, or, say, trucking activities that generate those emissions. Like what Steve had mentioned.
No, keep going, sorry, thanks.
But like what Steve had mentioned, if you'd like to, please do leave a comment, and we can, we can provide more details in response to that.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to know if I was interpolating something incorrect out of all that, which is to say, you know, if the no-project alternative just involves allowing the Plan 2030 to be built out and everything else, so there's still going to be building, there's still going to be traffic, and it may, I guess it led to this other question I have, which is, you know, based on the SEQA thresholds of significance, and BACMID's particular standards, Bay Area Air Quality Management District, I'll say BACMID, and the non-attainment status of the San Francisco Bay Area air basin, is there really, there's really nothing we can do to be non, to be not significant unavoidable? Because I was asking myself, how little development would we need to not trip it? And it's like, well, the no-project alternative still trips, in fact, says it's even worse.
Correct.
Am I just putting us in the right neighborhood of where we sit relative to the BACMID standard?
Well, first of all, the conclusions under the no-impact air quality, they'd be similar than the.
Oh, I'm sorry, similar.
Not worse. So that's, that's kind of a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Similar, but still, if it's similar, it's still going to be significant and unavoidable? Can I assume that?
That would be, yeah, that would, yeah, if you were to model the growth under the current general plan, you would still find that a significant unavoidable.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
That's helpful to make sure I'm thinking about it the right way. For one follow-up on the, the noise alternative, which got my attention when it said free bicycles, but it, if I'm reading it right, it says it does meet all the project objectives and more fully, see, the, the reduced traffic noise alternative would fully achieve all the project objectives, and would more fully meet the following objectives when compared to the proposed. So it's like, meets them all, and then more fully meets three of them. Is the, am I getting too excited about just saying, I'm not making a comment, am I getting too excited about the, the reduced noise alternative here, based on my read?
What I would, and I think probably there's a policy discussion that we can engage in more fully next week, or in two weeks, when we look at the draft general plan, but yes, and then I think we've got a complete streets plan coming up where we can probably dive deeper into exactly what it means and what's realistic and feasible. Because I think that's the key thing, is from a policy perspective, from an investment of city dollars, what can realistically be achieved? So if you had unlimited resources, could you get there? Probably. But when you have finite resources and challenging trade-offs to make, that's, I think, the policy decision where that comes in.
Got it. And that, that policy, policy discussion, if it happens after the close of the draft EIR public comment period, and I understand that it, that we'd probably need to, does, does this sort of practically preclude the possibility of that project alternative being adopted as the base project in the final EIR?
There's policy choices that would need to be made there, and so I think, as was noted, this is an informational disclosure document. So if you want to, if this information is used to maybe make more aggressive policy choices within the general plan, that's perfectly within the realm of feasibility. So if that informs a different mix of policies that go into, say, our circulation element around TDM, I, that's a perfectly logical kind of next progression if you wanted to go there. And then obviously, I think that would move forward to council, and they would need to factor that in with everything else.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful, Zach, thank you. I'm going to ask just two more through the chair that are just purely clarification. For our wildfire impacts, the slides were very helpful and triggered a question, or a bit of a different question. I guess I was assuming that if we just put a moratorium on new development in the high wildfire-risk areas, we could bring that to less than significant. But I definitely noticed the part where you said we would have to remove that, is, is that core of just, these are theoreticals in a sense, this, this document and the threshold? That would, that's kind of what the threshold of SEQA says? It wouldn't accept just no new development being a way to reduce it?
Correct, because you have the existing development there, part of the land use map that's being adopted or re-adopted as part of this project. So any changes to the development addition, you know, people come in, want to add on to their homes, or build ADUs, or other things, that could, that would exacerbate the risk, because you'd have more infrastructure. I mean, that, you know, could be allowed now, but you, it would exacerbate wildfire risk. So we can't say that it would be, that there would be no change in that area, even if the general plan's not identifying that area for development, because people can't make changes over time, so.
Gotcha, okay. And am I, it feels like it almost gets to the point where, at this point, we're looking at the environment, if the environment is wildfire, the environment is impacting the project, and we're not supposed to do that? But I think I'm flipping it around. Is it different?
Well, no, no, you are correct in identifying that. If a project exacerbates a condition, that still can be considered an impact. So although wildfire is technically an impact of the environment on the project, by adding infrastructure, you are exacerbating a condition. So the project, it's still, the project is resulting in higher impacts in that topic. So it's also, you know, that also can apply to, if you build on a hillside area that has the potential for slope failure or something like that. You can look at, you can address some levels of the impact of the environment on the project when, again, a condition is made worse by the project itself.
Gotcha, thanks. One more, water. The Cal Water Mid Peninsula water demands, I think it noted that they had, they've already done their own, they had done their own projections a few years ago, and there's a note in there that it, it says that demand rates were given to the consultant team to study the water demand under the general plan. So I just wanted to, I think I'm reading that right, I want to make sure, when we're looking at the, the water needs, we're not just relying on a study that, that MidPen already did, or Cal Water already did, sorry. It's, we actually modeled the water demand for this particular buildout.
That's correct.
Yes, and I do want to know, the, the primary water provider is Cal Water, but a portion of the city is also served by Estero Municipal Services, which is Foster City's water provider, and then that also serves a portion of San Mateo and Mariners Island.
Mariners Island, thank you. Okay, through the chair, no further clarifying questions at this time.
Hi, I have a question actually, that was triggered by Commissioner Wiggins's comments or questions. Can, to the chair, may I proceed?
Please go ahead.
So your question about wildfire sort of provoked, the issues, provoked me needing some clarification. So the, if the project is the general plan, and the general plan, there's a focus on, you know, sort of ten steady areas, but it also, but it, but it applies to the whole of the city. Does wildfire, is it a concern in? Does wildfire, is it a concern in, I mean, does wildfire apply to, you know, the downtown area and, you know, the El Camino area and all of these areas that are not like part of, I think of it as in relation to the WUI, the Wildlife Urban Interface Zones, which, I mean, I just think of those zones because those are, you know, areas that we have to design buildings to a higher fire resistant standard. But does it, does this relate to those areas as well as it does to, you know, hillsides and?
Yeah, it, this really is addressing the very high wildfire severity zones that are mapped by CAL FIRE, and I believe there are maps in both the general plan and the EIR that shows those areas. So this really applies to that specific designation. And it's not to say there aren't, I mean, there are other policies, you know, and many fire department regulations, et cetera, that govern wildfire risk in other parts of the city. But it is, it's the category, it's the identification of those sites because of their topography, you know, the vegetation, all of those factors that go in, in making that designation.
Okay, and I guess I didn't realize, you know, I have to look for how that's addressed in the general plan, which I'll do that for the next meeting.
Yeah.
And so to clarify, those, those zones exist along the western edge of the city, kind of west of 92 in the hillier areas as you transition to our sphere of influence unincorporated area. So there is not a huge portion of the city in this very high fire severity zone, but there's definitely a portion. And it does include neighborhoods with structures and other built environment.
Okay, I guess I just need to compare the EIR to the general plan. Thank you.
Do we have any more questions from commission members? Okay, great, then why don't we go ahead and open up public comment on this item? Any members of the public who are here in person, please submit a yellow slip, and now would be the time for members of the public attending remotely over Zoom to raise their hands.
Vice Chair Patel, we have three in-person public speakers and two via Zoom. How long would you like to give each person?
Why don't we go ahead and do the three minutes? Great. Thank you.
Okay. First speaker in person is Maureen Killo.
Hello, Planning Commission, my name is Maureen Killo, and I would like to comment on the aesthetics in the general plan draft EIR. Number one, San Mateo deserves the best objective design standard since there are many distinct neighborhood zones. Each neighborhood has its own visual and physical character and deserves respect. Number two, with regard to commercial development adjacent to residential, new infill building designs need to respect existing community character using established building designs found in San Mateo. Encourage new developments to be compatible and harmonious with building types and architectural styles prevalent in San Mateo, especially with the surrounding residential neighborhoods and downtown historic district. Number three, consider a project design review for proposed projects in the downtown and surrounding neighborhoods by a qualified historic preservation architect consultant. Aesthetics of new illuminated contemporary glass buildings will have an impact on existing older neighborhoods and the historic downtown. A consultant could be creative, could creatively bridge the design look between existing historic architecture and new buildings. Number four, regarding street lighting standards, more green street lamps are needed at dark residential intersections and longer residential blocks. This impacts safety for pedestrians and cyclists in the equity priority and underserved neighborhood areas in central and north central neighborhoods. Number five, Title 25 signs, please protect the character of older residential neighborhoods and prohibit neon commercial signs on the new tall buildings facing towards surrounding residential neighborhoods at night. Housing is at the upper level in these buildings. Prohibit older lighted outdoor billboards advertising alcohol in equity priority neighborhoods along 101, which generate blight. Number six, neighborhood beautification. Encourage drought tolerant green landscaping in residential neighborhoods and commercial projects, and expand the tree canopies and front yards, and plant more street trees through street tree plan, especially in equity priority neighborhoods. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is David Light. David, you can step up.
Thank you, members of the planning commission. My name is David Light. I'd like to comment on the draft EIR first. The seismic hazard map in Section 4.6 on geology and soil shows the risk of soil liquefaction during major earthquakes. This risk is broadly divided between a moderate risk region roughly from downtown to Highway 101, and then a high risk region pretty much east of 101 to the bay. And so I'm concerned that developers are going to prefer to locate their multi-story projects in the low-risk areas rather than on historic landfill areas that are in the higher risk liquefaction areas. There are many single-family and duplex home neighborhoods that are currently located on these desirable moderate risk areas, and these neighborhoods should not be displaced by large developments. San Mateo needs to protect and preserve our charming older homes in single-family and duplex neighborhoods that make San Mateo the desirable place that it is to live. Second, in Section 4.7 on greenhouse gas emissions, there's discussion of the need to reduce carbon dioxide from cars and trucks. New developments located near Caltrain or Samtrans, public transportation stops are routinely allowed to provide less than adequate parking spaces in their plans. However, there's continued lack of cooperation between Caltrain and BART with low ridership actually decreasing on Samtrans and Caltrain. So I think our city planners need to be realistic about the use of public transportation. New building, new building projects should provide adequate parking spaces and include parking with chargers for electric cars as a more realistic solution to greenhouse gas emissions. And just in reference to prior discussion, electric cars are much quieter, much less noise from electric cars than traditional internal combustion engine cars. With respect to cultural resources in the draft EIR, we need more neighborhood preservation and protection. We need updated surveys in central and north central neighborhoods and older neighborhoods as potential historic districts. We need protection of historic pre-war homes and small duplexes for middle and low-income families in the equity priority neighborhoods. We need to avoid demolition of homes in our older neighborhoods, especially on the east side of San Mateo. Instead, we need to preserve the beautiful street-level exteriors of our existing craftsmen, Spanish and Tudor revival and Victorian homes. New home construction should be compatible with the existing neighborhoods and respect existing community character. We need to encourage new developments to be compatible and harmonious with building styles and architectural styles prevalent in San Mateo. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Lori Watanuki, you can go ahead.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki, and my comments will center on noise and transportation. The impact of the build-out results in unacceptable cumulative traffic noise within the EIR study areas, no mitigation measures are available according to the EIR. Temporary construction noise can be reduced by staggering the projects. And also, if you can take the trucks out through the state highways, through El Camino Real, through 92, through 101 to reduce the dust and toxic pollution. We need to reduce construction impacts in the equity priority neighborhoods. Reduce the heights to three stories in the land use map along Fourth and Fifth Avenue and the west side of South Delaware in the central neighborhood. Also reduce the heights of mixed-use high and mixed-use, number one, and mixed-use high two in the downtown. Bicycle boulevards are described in the draft EIR, and it says to include traffic calming on low traffic volumes. And we have Fifth Avenue as described as a traffic boulevard from Delaware to South Amphlet. We would like to keep Fifth Avenue as a local street versus having it reclassified to an arterial, and there is this conflict in the general plan which needs to be addressed. Central neighborhood has been an underserved neighborhood, and equity priority boundary should be extended to Ninth Avenue, include streets from Amphlet to Delaware. And the policy also states to implement traffic calming on residential streets to reduce the cut-through traffic, to address traffic noise. We need traffic circles on Ninth Avenue and Fifth Avenue from Delaware to South Amphlet, and to keep the four-way stop signs. Do not reclassify these streets to arterials. Do not put a truck route on Fifth Avenue from South Delaware to South Amphlet on Fifth Avenue, since it's going to be a proposed bike boulevard. Do not put a truck route on South Humboldt between Fourth and Ninth. Need to make, keep these streets safer for the bicyclists. The Neighborhood Traffic Management Program is a living document. It needs to be updated to better address the cut-through traffic volumes. Needs more flexibility. Needs to address traffic impacts on collectors, excuse me, local streets, collectors, and arterials in residential neighborhoods. What are the ATD volumes on Peninsula and Popular avenues from Delaware to South Humboldt? Are they included in the draft EIR? It's difficult to locate this information in the draft EIR. Perhaps you need to have it listed in the table of contents. And what is the percentage of Burlingame traffic that uses the Popular exit in San Mateo? We need a separate study for the sixth grade separations, and why do we have these many grade separations between First and Ninth? And why does Peninsula Avenue, why isn't Peninsula Avenue included with the grade separations?
I'm sorry, but your time has passed. Do you have a final sentence?
I think that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Ken Abreu. Ken, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you very much. This is Ken Abreu. I have really a question, rather than a comment, that hopefully the staff can address. Basically, this plan, the general plan goes out to 2040, and so I'm trying to understand how exactly does the EIR fit with that? I assume it also has to sustain out to 2040, and that the EIR also has to apply to the two and a half housing elements with the RENA out to 2040. I know part of the general plan is to have a ballot measure next year to amend Measure Y. So does this EIR change or apply in either case? Is it valid whether that ballot measure passes or not? And if it's not valid, if it doesn't pass, how does that impact the, the general plan and the ability to meet the RENA numbers going forward? That's just a question, and thanks for all your hard work and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Then last commenter is Michael Weinauer. Michael, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, planning commissioners, I hope you can hear me. Just in, in listening to some of the, the early commentary and questions, even from the planning commissioners, you know, Commissioner Wiggins, for example, it kind of underscores that I really have concerns about the accessibility of this. I mean, it's a thousand-page document, and my first reaction was to turn off my computer and run away. And I just worry about other people not only, you know, finding it really daunting and avoiding it, but just not being able to understand it. It's very technical with a lot of acronyms and things like that, and I think we have to take pains to, Mr. Wiggins said, you know, some of this pertains to the EIR, not the general plan itself. Most people are not going to understand that or how to tie those things together. So that's a big concern I have. Also, you know, a lot of these things, there's difficulty in assessing, and the general, the EIR seems to kind of shortage shoulders on a lot of this and say, oh, well, you know, we, it's difficult to do this, so we're not going to do it. Or, you know, it's hard to tell the difference between the project and the, you know, the area bay area and the county and the city and the county, so we're not going to do it. I don't think that's an excuse, because the impacts to people are going to be real. Overall, this EIR and the proposed general plan, and by the way, I submitted these in writing, apologies for the late submission, but it makes a lot of assumptions that people will not drive, and the transportation will be readily available. And these are not reasonable current or foreseeable future realities. This EIR and the GP plan, plan for unlikely extreme levels of growth around 40% that will materially worsen on an absolute basis, air quality, traffic, noise, and other key areas. Why are we planning for such extraordinary and absurd growth levels? The EIR and the proposed general plan focus a lot on per capita statistics. We can't lose sight of those absolute numbers, though. You know, VMT in New York, I'm sure is very, New York City is very low, but it's New York City. Many of us want a suburban environment. The EIR and the proposed general plan claims that to require balancing jobs in office. Given the massive current imbalance, the focus should be almost entirely on housing and not luxury rental-only housing, affordable housing. And existing housing stock should be preserved as it's generally more affordable, excuse me, and gets replaced, i.e. gentrified, by unaffordable housing, of which there is not really much of a shortage in San Mateo. Furthermore, this report uses a lot of non-committal language, suggest, promote, support, encourage. These are meaningless without concrete legislation, quantifiable targets that someone is accountable for, and funding to ensure aspirational plans are actually put into place and impacts are truly understood and mitigate. We've seen too many examples of too many pie in this, this guy desires that never materialize. There's a lot of calls for decarbonizing the housing stock. Again, there's serious doubts around PGV's abilities to export, to support the existing demand, much less doubling that demand, and the significant cost to property owners, potentially some of those who are very burdened. So those are just some of the things I hope you'll take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other public commenters at this time?
There are no other public commenters.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and close the public comment period. And I think I would also like to take, let's say, a 10-minute bio break and come back at 7:35. Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, we're back from our break. And so now we will move on to commissioner discussion, comments and discussion. So I want to poll my fellow commissioners and figure out what is the most efficient way to tackle this? Because we have 18 subject areas where environmental analyses were conducted. And so I think what, what I would like to know from the other commissioners is broadly speaking, how many comments do we think we have? And do we feel it would be better to go in order through all of these 18 subject matter areas? Or do we think we should break it up and maybe do like three or four at a time and rotate? I'll start off by saying I do not actually have a ton of comments. And so for me, it might be most efficient to just go through all of them and cycle, but depending on how many comments other people have, we may want to break it up.
Through the chair, I, or vice chair, I'm sorry. So I personally looked focused primarily on the areas that have significant and unavoidable impacts and less so on the, on the many different areas that were found to not have significant impacts. And largely because I don't consider myself an expert in EIR, so I wouldn't, I don't feel confident enough to, to, you know, get into too many weeds with things where I just don't have much reason to disagree with what was written. So that's where I'm coming from. It's mostly looking at kind of the portions that the agenda report itself highlighted.
Air quality, noise and wildfire. Yeah. Commissioner Wiggins, what do you think?
Through the vice chair. I was maybe a little bit of a hybrid. I focused on those. I tried to stretch my abilities by reading other sections. Actually, air quality is one of those, too. But I would, I would hit those. I would hit, I have, you know, a couple of comments or discussion items for transportation and hydrology and maybe a few, you know, loose ends off of that. But there's a number of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's eight of the 18 that I have no comments on. So happy however you want to run through it. If you go through my item, we'll check a lot of them off quickly, certainly.
Perfect.
And then?
Commissioner Williams, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I have a very general comments, actually. And I, I also kind of looked more closely at the ones of significant impact. So I'm sorry, is it really noisy for you guys to look for votes on?
There's a little bit of a maybe vacuum noise in the background.
Hopefully that will go away soon. Anyway, yeah, I, I'm fine with going through them, you know, overall because my comments are fairly general.
Through the vice chair, is that significant and unavoidable background noise?
I think it is, yes. So here's, here's what I would propose then. Maybe we break this up into two rounds. We've got 18 subject matter areas. We could go through one through nine first, and that contains air quality, which is one of the significant impact areas. And then we could do 10 through 18 second, which has noise and wildfire. Okay, great. Commissioner Wiggins, how do you feel about starting?
Through, through the chair, I just wanted to interject. In terms of the comments, we are obviously taking notes and will be responding to the comments raised tonight. But if you've got specific comments that you would like to see responded to, if you can submit those in writing, that is the best way to get them into the record.
Perfect. And if, if I understand and recall correctly, the reason you just reminded us of that is because for EIRs, there is a requirement, right, that comments be responded to? Is that correct?
That is correct. And also just to make sure, obviously, we might not be able to catch them exactly as maybe you were intending. So putting them in writing from you is the best way to ensure that they get addressed and get to the issue that maybe you have that is of concern. But otherwise, as the comments are discussed and provided, we'll be logging those and then working to update the EIR, respond to them accordingly.
Perfect. So, Commissioner Wiggins, would you like to start?
Through the vice chair. And just one, one quick clarification on what interim directors, am I saying it right? Is it interim director or interim city manager? I can't remember.
Interim director.
Interim director, okay. I don't want to keep saying it wrong. Basically, if I say it another way, if I want to see my name in the final EIR, email it to you and you'll respond to it in the final EIR, right?
That's one way of putting it, yes.
I've got it. I've got it. It's crystal clear. Okay. So, vice chair, should I run down my comments on the first nine right off the bat? Okay. Aesthetics, no comments. That brings us to air quality. I, you know, I, let me, this is a great place to thank staff and the consultants for all the work they've done and to kind of build on what Commissioner Nugent was expressing. There's a team full of experts that spend a lot of time working on this. And it's not only, and I really appreciate that, by the way, because I read into these things and I try to understand them. And to the extent that I can't, it reminds me just how technical it is and how well-versed you need to be to be doing this work. So I'm really appreciative of all that work and specific things and that sort of work and a general thanks for the long process that we've gone through to this date. And there's a cer, I will say there's a certain level here where I'm inclined not to disagree because I, I'm just not an expert. So, and I think we have that luxury in a way, knowing that we have great consultants doing great work, very detailed. And the other piece of this I was trying to allude to in my questions is the SEQA process for this, I'll call it unique as a way to analyze impacts and issues of something this large. And so you also need to be very well-versed in the SEQA guidelines, which are pretty dense, and case law about how it's interpreted. And so I'm just saying those things out loud. Staff and the consultants know that better than me. But just, you know, for the broader public, trying to have a look at this and follow along, those are all pieces that, that play into it. There's a particular way to do an analysis that is consistent with, with case law, quite frankly. And so those are just all the pieces of complexity. Those are some of the pieces of complexity that I'm appreciative that we have a team working on. And so it does lead me, I think frankly with pretty good reason, to defer to them unless there is some special area where I'm, I'm somehow quite the expert. So I say all that with air quality. I would say I had one, I'll call it, it's a comment question. I asked it to staff and they already provided me an answer. But when you're trying to understand the issues of air quality, understand the thresholds for significance, the levels of, of pollution that are considered to be, to be thresholds. And there's a lot of technical ways to look at that. But there's, for ozone, there's eight-hour exceedances and 24-hour exceedances. And Table 4.2-4 shows eight-hour exceedances for, for us, or I think it lists them when, however, when you look at the Backman impacted communities map, it does not show any eight-hour exceedances in San Mateo. And so I'll, the comment portion of that is maybe if we can just address that for the casual reader. But I, what I learned when I asked that staff, that question to staff, I'll find the answer is, yeah, the values shown in Table 4.2-4 are from an individual monitoring station. If I think, if I recall right, that individual monitoring station's in San Carlos, maybe, Riverwood City, it's around the border. People can interrupt me if I'm wrong, but I think it's, it's on the edge of the city. And the Backman impact communities map is sort of, they're pulling different data sets. So part of the complexity in all this is just that you're, you're pulling from different data sets. They're looking at, at different pollutants or they're looking at toxic air contaminants. So just in that one case, you have sort of right next to each other, two sets of data that appear to be the same and have a different, appear to have a different conclusion. And so that might be one spot where we can make it a little more clear. But I don't, I think once I ask the question to staff, I understand that they're basically pulling from different data sets. My, and the other thing I was trying to get at earlier was just, you know, understanding, and you could see this over the weekend. So ozone leads to smog, if I understand correctly. And if I also understand correctly, when you're up in the hills looking down at the San Francisco Bay on a, on a certain type of day, probably a hotter day, you can't really see the bay because of all the smog. And that smog doesn't stop at the borders of San Mateo. And so part of the thing to appreciate about all this is we could do wonders with our plan if they were even feasible. And the smog occurs at, at the basin, at the basin scale. And so it's, it's, it's a challenge to work with and it's not surprising that we would be sort of found to be significant and unavoidable. And it's also not surprising that if we did nothing, we would continue to be significant and unavoidable. So part of the air quality issues, I, it's, I'm sure it's wrong to say we can't do anything about it, but we're in a broader challenge of air quality that's been brought about by a number of factors. But, you know, one of the main ones is, is internal combustion engine vehicle pollution and, and the particulate matter that comes from diesel engines as well as from tires. So it's hard for us to do a lot about it. And it makes me want to try to do what I can. And so the thing that sticks out to me that I could do is really express concern over putting new housing right next to the, the areas where the, where some of that pollution is done. The ozone, the smog is over the entire basin, but we know about elevated PM 2.5 levels along particular highways, all of 101 in San Mateo, portions of 92 in San Mateo. And so it's why I was asking the questions about the impact, you know, the environment impacting the project and vice versa. If we, if we can look at the, the existing environmental challenges of air quality and cancer risk coming from particulate matter getting into your lungs, if we, if we put new housing there, I wonder if we're exacerbating the situation. And if we exacerbate a situation, I wonder if that, you know, if, if that should be looked at as, as a significant impact. So I'll put that out there in case other commissioners want to consider it. But my, my feeling is we have to do everything we can to make the air safe to breathe. And it's one thing for the air to be safe and clean inside your one thing for the air to be safe and clean inside your building with new MERV 13 filtration, but it's another thing to go outside and, you know, probably unless you pay attention to this stuff, not be aware of the particulate matter that you're breathing in. And this, you've, city's built new housing, it's been permitted, you're moving in, you're living there, you think it must be safe. And I want that to be the case. So that is all I can say about air quality, I think. And I think I did these alphabetically. Biological resources, no comments. Cultural resources, no comments. That means great job, by the way. Let's see, E, energy. I noted that we actually are coming up with a per capita increase of one therm per user. So it was technically an increase in the per capita level. I assume we just said, hey, that's not significant per se, even though it is a per capita increase. And that does kind of lead probably into the GHG. So that was my only comment on energy. I didn't even bring it up as a question because it seemed straightforward that that was not particularly significant, and it does say that that's based on all these really conservative assumptions being made. So greenhouse gas, I just had one question. So measure BE2 in the climate action plan, it's talking about electrifying existing building stock. And, you know, I was reading this and seeing that, I think it's BE1 electrify new buildings. There's a mandate for that, you have to do it. Existing buildings, I wasn't seeing it as a mandate, and it's a big part of the cumulative reduction in emissions by 2030, it's coming from an assumption around electrifying existing building stock. So this was one that I had asked staff about, and I think they had pointed out that when you look under the hood, there's a number of programs that sort of, maybe not a blanket statement across existing buildings, but smaller programs, when you do this, when you do that, when you pull a permit, they're going to require you to electrify certain pieces of equipment. And so that was giving me some comfort there, making me think that we could rely on this level of reduction, because that measure is one of the biggest pieces that's bringing us down to that 40% reduction from 1990 level. So I looked at that, in the end, I'm feeling okay with it on GHG. Geology and soils, no comments. Hazards, no comments. And where's nine? Through the chair, through the vice chair, where's nine? Where do I stop?
Nine is hydrology and water quality.
Okay, so I'm just going to do hydrology and water quality. I had a number of questions here that were technical, and I'm starting with the maps and looking at them, and there's a difference, so, and this may end up being one interim director that I email you about, so you don't have to bother writing it all down, not that I need to see myself in the final EIR. But figure S5 in the safety element is showing levees and protection from the bay, from sea level rise. And hydrology, figure 4.9-2, it looks like it's the same, the same map, it's showing the same thing, but there's some inconsistencies. So the specific one that I noticed first was the levee in red along Detroit Drive. In S5, there's a gap, there's a portion without a levee in there, and 4.9.2, it's consistent the whole way. And I wouldn't have, believe me, I did not look at all the figures that closely, but with that one, I was looking at something that I think maybe Commissioner Williams had asked, or one of my fellow commissioners asked, understanding the area that is levee protected. And I guess the question, the related question I had to this, if someone knows, let me know. But the north shore view area is behind a levee, north of Third, east of 101, but it was not shown hatched as being a levee protected area. Is that just because the firm, the FEMA flood maps have not been updated yet? There was an expectation, right, that levee was raised, it's going to be considered levee protected, is that right?
Need to look into the exact area, but I believe that is the case.
Okay. This is one that I'll end up emailing, I think. A related one to that is we have a list of, and this is in hydrology 4, impact hydrology 4, we have a list of 41 active polluted sites throughout the city. I think there's more, but they're closed. There's 41 active, and most of them are the sort of things you would expect, dry cleaners, gas stations, et cetera. But we know we have a risk of groundwater rising, sea level rise coming in. I guess I would have thought in hydrology 4, there would have been more of an analysis of potential for risk on that, and maybe it was in there and it was cursory, and I had imagined, you know, that it was possible to do that more, in a more detailed way, but even if we can't, maybe there's a way to say, you know, this is the most that can be modeled at this level. So that was a concern that I had. And, you know, the other, I guess the general piece is, we have the, we're studying, you know, 100-year flood zone, but we know from our recent presentation from One Shoreline that they're modeling base flood elevation plus six. I think that's going to be higher than what's in here, and so question slash comment, you know, are these levees really protecting us from sea level rise? Do we have an unidentified risk here? And are we pushing everything that we can do in terms of doing everything we can to mitigate those risks? So my, asking that question, my position is that the general plan is pretty strong in those areas, and I, but at the same time, I don't know if, this is one where we did not have a significant and unavoidable impact. And I feel like given the volatility in changes in sea level rise, the fact that we have existing pollution underground and all the related elements to this, in my mind, I almost thought this would have been one that ends up significant and unavoidable, sort of to be conservative, if you will. And so that was, that was probably my takeaway. If you want to, yes, that's the gist of everything I was thinking on that one. Through the chair, that's it on those nine.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Nugent?
My comments are on air quality impacts, noise impacts primarily. So is that where we're, is that where we're at now, or is this?
We are doing in this section, air quality would be covered. Noise will be in the next round.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure, okay. So from the EIR, page 5-8, with regard to air quality impacts, I'm just going to read it. It says, under the no project alternative, which, to clarify, is basically our current general plan, is that, that's what it means, the no project alternative? The city's existing climate action plan would remain in place because the proposed climate action plan update does not include changes to the strategies in the city's existing climate action plan under both the proposed project and the no project alternative. The city's climate action plan would be consistent with the Backman 2017 Clean Air Plan goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and protect the climate. Overall, because the no project alternative would result in less concentrated development and generate more VMT per service population, the operational impacts would be greater than the proposed project. However, due to the proposed project having a higher degree of development potential, the construction impacts would be greater than under the no project alternative. Overall, the no project alternative would result in similar air quality impacts when compared to the proposed project. So those are kind of the conclusions that I get from air quality impacts, which the EIR says are significant and unavoidable. However, if you're looking at it as a decision maker, it seems that the air quality impacts of the general plan update, while not negligible in themselves, are negligibly different from the existing general plan's continued build-out. Is that correct? Is that, so, it seems, I'll say that again, it seems that the air quality impacts of the general plan update, while not negligible in themselves, are negligibly different from the existing general plan's continued build-out. And the way I read that is increased construction-related emissions, it would, the general plan update would result in increased construction-related emissions over the current general plan, but it would result in reduced transportation-related emissions than the current general plan. And basically, the EIR says it's kind of a wash. The reason why I highlight that and I note that is, I look at it from, you know, a decision maker standpoint, where, you know, you read that, hey, this is, these are impacts that cannot be fully mitigated to a less-than-significant level. However, you know, if you're comparing what the existing general plan is to what the general plan update, it actually appears to me, as a decision maker, kind of a wash. And so is that basically what's being said? Sorry, I guess this is turning into more of a question, but I highlight this because, you know, if I'm trying to decide, well, is it worth, you know, isolating all the other benefits? Are these air quality impacts, you know, deal breakers? I look at it, well, it appears the EIR is saying that they're actually awash with the current general plan if that continues to be built out. That's what's saying. So I think it's important that that information is highlighted when we are referring to the air quality impacts, because it's easy to kind of latch on to the fact that it's, that the air quality impacts are not mitigatable to a less-than-significant level. However, it's important to note that these impacts would also materialize were we not to, were we not to take on the general plan update. And so to me, if you're looking at it as a decision maker, you just need to know that, hey, what are the impacts? Construction-related emissions will rise. What are, what's the other impact? Transportation-related emissions will be reduced, so in a sense, it feels like a wash. Is there any way that that can be maybe highlighted as additional, you know, as this goes to the city council and people bring that up? To me, that's the thing that stuck out to me, is that overall, the no project alternative would result in similar air quality impacts when compared to the proposed project. So, you know, to me, I don't want to just keep repeating that, but I feel that it's strange, as somebody who's admittedly not an expert in EIRs, I read that, and to me, it seems, well, are we basically going to have air quality impacts regardless of what we do? And the general plan update is just trading one type of impact, construction-related ones for additional, versus additional vehicle miles? I guess so. That's all I have to say about that, but I think that that's important to highlight. And then, yeah, so that's all I have to say about air quality impacts. And then when we get to the next section, I will have more.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Okay, fortunately that noise stopped. So, let's see. Yeah, I had my comments sort of set up in a different manner, but yeah, first of all, thanks to the presenters and to the public speakers too. I had some similar comments to public speakers, and so, you know, I appreciate that. I generally wanted to just note too, that it's very well thought out, the draft EIR, and that it, you know, it covers all of the required areas of concern as required by SEQA. So, you know, I'm impressed with the level of detail. I'm going to skip over a couple of these general comments, because I think I put them in here now. So just kind of going down the list, I hopefully haven't forgotten any, but for aesthetics, it was very well covered because the building codes, including Cal Green, really addresses these items pretty well. So I don't know that there's anything missing or incorrect. It's well addressed. I will note that there was a lot in the draft EIR about lighting, which I appreciate, but it's often in conflict with maybe what the public would like to see. The public would like to see more light, more lighting for safety, and, you know, when the EIR is, as we talked about, it's the effect of a project or a building or whatever the project is, in this case, the general plan, it's the effect on the environment. And so this, you know, this idea of protecting the environment, protecting the dark night sky, and, you know, reducing glare, you know, these are all suitably addressed, and I think, I appreciate that. I mean, that also is in line with the building code and Cal Green and such. So anyway, I think that that was pretty well addressed. Air quality, I don't really have any comments on that, other than acknowledging the fact that the project has a significant impact. So I don't know where we go from there. That's this whole ongoing discussion, but I guess I just want to acknowledge that. Let's see, biological, my only comment here was just that, maybe it's just me, but it seemed like there should be maybe some photos of all of the plants that are listed that are part of the kind of concern in that section. Seems like it might be helpful. It's obviously not really 100% necessary, but that was my only comment there. Let's see, cultural, what should I say on this one? I guess, okay, so the, I made myself a note here previously. The EIR says that there is no significant impact, but I'm not sure how that can be. I guess when I'm looking at this one with regards to the historical, historically significant buildings, what I really would like to do between now and the next meeting is to study and compare the draft EIR item, this draft EIR item versus the draft general plan, and sort of compare and contrast what's covered in there. So I just find it interesting that there's no significant impact when, you know, we need to kind of look and see what the general plan allows for. It does seem like to me like it would have an impact. Energy, Title 24 Energy Code covers this well, and the state addresses this as under the California Building Code, Title 24, so that seems well addressed. Geology and soils, I had no comment on that. Greenhouse gases, I just made a note that what Commissioner Wiggins said was, I think, worth noting, that there are requirements now are coming along for electrifying the building stock, he said. Hazardous materials, I had no comment. I, again, I mean, sort of similar to what the other commissioners have said, or commissioners have said, that, you know, I'm not an expert in these things, and there's a lot of information in here that, you know, I don't have any place to comment on sort of this issue of hazardous materials. So it generally, you know, made sense, in a general sense to me. Let's see, hydrology and water quality, I did review this in some detail because I had some questions about that. And I think Commissioner Wiggins actually brought that up as well, that question I started to bring up about the levee, and is this proposed for future? And does that have to be done regardless of the project or the general plan? And does that have to be done regardless of the project or the general plan? You know, and sort of, I think that could use a little bit of clarifying, and it may be just that I need to study that a little bit more, but it raised a few questions for me about that levy and the extent of the city that's being protected by a levy. Is that it? I think that was the first nine, right?
Yes. Through noise.
What's that? Oh, yeah.
Through noise. So, if you haven't... Sorry. No, through hydrology and water quality. You're correct. Yep.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. That's those notes. That's it for now.
Thank you. And I will go next. I will make a quick comment that, as my fellow commissioners were going through their notes, I noticed that hazardous materials is missing from the table of contents on page I, goes from 4.7 to 4.9. Okay. I also did not have any comments on aesthetics. For air quality, I had very similar comments to Commissioner Wiggins. I actually was debating whether or not to discuss them, because I think some of them are more related to the draft general plan than to the EIR specifically, but I also found myself contemplating this idea of the effects of the proposed project on the environment, not the effects of the environment on the proposed project in this case law that was referenced. And essentially, what I think this is saying is that CEQA does not require analysis of the potential environmental effects from citing sensitive receptors near existing sources, and this type of analysis is not provided in Impact Discussion below. And I guess I had this question of like, maybe CEQA doesn't require it, but does that mean we shouldn't do it? Because I feel like we should be aspiring for the healthiest standard, right? And so, I've brought it up before in the general plan subcommittee meetings. I'm really struggling with the fact that the only place that we have residential medium land use adjacent to these high-volume roadways is in our equity priority community. It just seems very contrary to the entire section on environmental justice that also exists in the draft EIR. And in fact, our draft EIR says on page 4.2-50, "The burden of breathing unhealthy air is often disproportionately borne by low-income communities and communities of color, many of which are situated closer to busy highways, ports, factories, and other pollution sources." And I didn't copy it down, but there was a section, a statement in there about if something is within a thousand feet of one of those things, there's extra considerations that you're supposed to make. But it goes back to the fact, this is not the general plan, this is the draft EIR, but I'm really, I'm really having a hard time with this whole environment on the project versus project on the environment, and even if it's not required, do we want to have a discussion about that anyway? Could we have a discussion about that anyway? So, those are my only thoughts there. Under cultural resources, I have a very in-the-weeds question, and I apologize and not send it ahead of time, so it's okay, and totally understand if we don't know the answer. But on page 4.4-6, it says, under section 27.66.040 of our local government code, I guess, "All planning applications involving a designated historic resource are required to be evaluated by an independent architectural historian hired directly by the city to review the project and determine that the project is in compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Structure." And so, if I remember correctly, the process when we get an application is that if the property or building or structure is more than 50 years old, the applicant has to pay for a historic resource consultant to even determine if it's a historic resource, because if it is, then CEQA will be triggered. And I know the applicant pays for that, because that was mentioned in the one project that came before us. Here, if it is a historic resource, then it has to... The designs have to be evaluated by an independent architectural historian. It says "hired directly by the city," and so, my questions for staff is, does the city pay for that, or does that cost passed on to the applicant?
That is a pass-through cost.
Great. Thank you. Hazards and hazardous materials. Okay. This is also a little bit in the weeds here. I'll have to go through my notes and see if I can remember what I was thinking. Oh, my gosh, I don't want to read this whole block of text out of my notes. Okay. So, we have a table of, I think you mentioned it was 41 hazardous sites. It says, read... The page 4.8-21 says, "Redevelopment of these sites under the proposed project could potentially expose future residents and workers to hazards from known hazardous materials releases on and near the sites. Development projects would be conducted in accordance with the proposed general plan and the regulations and the policies of the agency assigned to the site." It says, "Furthermore requirements for hazardous material sites are bolstered by various goals, policies, and actions of the proposed general plan as listed in Impact Discussion HAS-1, which includes Policy S 6.7, contaminated sites." And that policy says, "Require the cleanup of contaminated sites..." Dot, dot, dot. I'm cutting some stuff out of the middle. "...in conjunction with substantial site development or redevelopment where feasible." And so, if I back up and summarize what I just read, I think what I'm hearing is, we have some hazardous sites. There could be impacts from redevelopment of those hazardous sites, but we have this policy in our general plan that deals with contaminated sites. But that policy itself says that cleanup is required where feasible. So, I'm wondering what happens if we have a hazardous site and we're saying there are no impacts because of this policy, but the policy doesn't have a strict requirement for cleanup. The requirement is where feasible. So, I... There's a question in there. I think the question is, like, do we have to be more specific about the potential impacts and risks if the policy isn't a hard requirement for cleanup?
I would need to look specifically at how the where feasible is applied, but I think the important thing to note is, that's not the only policy that would govern a site like this.
Okay.
There are state and federal requirements that would absolutely apply to, depending on the nature of the contamination and what the proposed project is. So, that's... That finding would not solely rely on that single policy.
Okay. Great. And those were all of my comments through the first nine, so I want to open it back up to my fellow commissioners if you have any additional comments, or if there's anything you want to discuss after hearing other comments from other commissioners. If not, we can just move on to the next set of nine. All right. Let's do that. Commissioner Wiggins?
Sorry. I'll... I feel like my, you know, we've voiced similar sentiments on the air quality issue, and I was probably taking the words of the consultant and twisting them about, in regards to wildfire, where it's a discussion of, does the project exacerbate conditions? And so, I don't want to take that out of context, because in my own mind, I'm thinking, well, you place, you know, the project increases traffic, and traffic is going to increase particulate matter on Highway 101, so the project is creating a significant impact in that way. And from there, what's a mitigation? Well, mitigation is to move, you know, is to move residential housing away from the immediate part of it. And it... I'm exploring, talking out loud here, but I had a separate question, and it was addressed, but, you know, why don't we have a project alternative that gets rid of the air quality impact? And I think the answer is because it's impossible. You are supposed to do everything you... I understand that you're supposed to take all the mitigations that you can, apply all the mitigations that you reasonably can, even if it's still going to be found significantly and unavoidable. Significant and unavoidable. So, I guess I'm hung up on what appears to be an existing issue that's being exacerbated by the project that could be partially, but not completely mitigated through an adjustment to the general plan. And I open it up to anyone that wants to discuss that, or staff wants to tell me I'm thinking about it wrong, but I'm probably hung up on it, and I'm going to send it in as a written comment anyway, so.
I actually wonder if we should discuss that at our next meeting, because it feels like more of a...
Sure.
...raining policy issue, unless the question is, should that impact and potential mitigation be discussed in the EIR?
Yes. Through the chair. That would be the way I was thinking of it, is not like I can't wait two more weeks to talk about it, but to me, there is a part that's appropriate to what's been agendized, which is considering the analysis in regards to thresholds of significance and applying mitigations where feasible. And this is where, in my mind, we've missed a potential mitigation.
Which is to just not cite the receptors...
Yeah.
In certain locations, yeah.
Or just maybe just to... Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. There could just be a more general mitigation that is then discussed next week about potential policies.
Sure.
I would just want to note that for a programmatic-level EIR, there aren't mitigations. So, anything that would be... That would ultimately be a policy or an action in the general plan, so that's moving to the discussion.
Got you. Got it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Through the chair, I just... This is more of an EIR question. It seems to me, my understanding of EIR is not necessarily looking at what the environmental impacts would be to the residents of a new project, but more or less what the environmental impacts are to the existing context. Is that... So, if you're looking at, say, discussing a new project in along 101, I don't think the EIR scope is to analyze the air quality for that particular project. It's to analyze the air quality to the city of San Mateo as a whole. Is that more or less what I'm interpreting? Sorry. I'm looking at you, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
Well, the project-specific analysis looks at the construction and operation of the project itself.
Right.
So, it does provide specific mitigation measures to reduce those impacts. And typically, because of the proximity to areas with high toxic contaminants or diesel particulate matters, there usually is mitigation or requirements for higher filtration in the buildings themselves, and not having opening windows and whatnot right against that area. So, there is mitigation that we usually recommend for those, that type of project, specific to the project itself.
Yeah. And so, this EIR is not looking at that sort of project-specific?
Because there's no project. This is looking at the overall buildout, you know?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's what my impression was. So, I don't know if that's actually an applicable comment to talk about what the air quality impacts would be for a particular development in, you know, a rezoned site along 101. Not to say that that's not an important thing to factor in, in decision-making about the general plan, but I don't know if that is covered in this EIR or would be covered.
Through the vice chair. I don't mean to be so formal, but, yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner Nugent. I wouldn't be thinking that you would be talking about a single project, or even, which hasn't been proposed, or a single theoretical project. I would say that the project being studied under the EIR does involve land use, and so, the project contemplates making land use decisions that would allow for a certain type of development to occur in an area with air quality issues.
Mm-hmm.
I still think, by the way, that it's a stretch, what I'm talking about here in general, but I want to have the discussion and confirm that I'm stretching things too far. And it's just, it's interesting to me that if... And the different elements are different, and their thresholds of significance are different, so I know it's apples and oranges, but if, under wildfire, the way to reduce a significant and unavoidable issue is to remove the development there, it's just interesting to me that that wouldn't be... That's an existing risk, right? We do no project, there's still of wildfire risk. And you do the project, you're heating the earth a little bit more, you're increasing the risk of wildfire, so it's exacerbating an existing issue. But even if it's a theoretical thing that you'd never do, the way to fix it would be to remove the risk, and that's the logic under wildfire, if I understand it correctly. And this is where I think we're... Part of it, I just want to talk it through and come to the conclusion that, like, look, we're stuck with the framework we have. BACMED defines these thresholds, and CEQA says that, you know, this is how you look at it, not the other way around. So... But I want to make sure I'm trying to keep it as a EIR discussion, and make sure that we're doing everything... We've looked at everything as we are required to do under the EIR. Though I agree, it wouldn't be a particular project. It would be an exacerbation of existing condition just to do the project, because it would increase emissions.
Through the vice chair, I don't know if it would actually be an exacerbation of an existing condition in the scope of this EIR, because it's not necessarily increasing the air pollution in the city. It's more increasing the number of people that are exposed to a point source pollution area. And so, I don't know. I think it's probably a little bit different. I would guess, me personally, I wouldn't expect that to be in this EIR, but again, I'm no expert.
No. Then, again, through the vice chair, the... Yes, I don't mean to say that placing, that the land use being there exacerbates the condition, but doing the project increases vehicle miles traveled, and there's a certain amount of emissions per vehicle, right? So, this project is increasing traffic on 101. Therefore, it is increasing diesel particulate matter on 101, all the tailpipe emissions, which will be reduced as you go to electric vehicles, and all the...
Tire particulate.
And the tire particulates, which will not be reduced. And I, as I was reading this, I tried to dig in on some of the science for that, and I will not go any further down the rabbit hole at this time. But it would increase... I do believe that the project would exacerbate existing air quality problems. I think where my logic has hitched is what I think what you're pointing out, is that placing the sensitive receptors nearby doesn't make that project work, doesn't make that problem worse, right? Doing the project at all writ large across the city creates traffic, creates the TAC and the other one.
I think a more, a more applicable thought is, in relation to this EIR, is looking at the general plan as far as, well, we're putting a mixture of new developable volume throughout the city, and if we were concentrating more within our transportation, our TOD areas versus concentrating less, that seems to be more applicable to the analysis that's provided in the EIR with regard to air quality. And so, if you were looking at it, oh, well, these projects are not close to transportation, that would be like, yes, that should actually be captured in the EIR, because we do have certain areas within the plan that are not as transportation-adjacent as others. Now, do they provide a net benefit regionally? Probably, because people are going to be driving shorter distances to work than they would if they were moving to Tracy or something like that. And so, that, I think, is the scope that the EIR is trying to address.
I agree.
Yeah. I know. I mean, the discussion that you're having seems to be more for the general plan.
I think this is a discussion that we would probably pick up in two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Would you like to start the next section of comments?
Yes. Can I make one other air quality comment?
Absolutely.
Just more of an observation, and I appreciated what Commissioner Nugent was talking about in regards to the role of a decision-maker. Looking at the analysis that the EIR has provided, trying to make a decision, there will be, you know, there will be a statement of overriding considerations that will come out, and we'll talk about... there will be a statement of overriding considerations that will come out and will talk about, you know, I, I think, actually, I don't want to get ahead of myself, there could be one that comes out and that could talk about why the benefits of the project outweigh the significant and unavoidable impacts from air quality. And I'm just thinking out loud, do, do I see anything that, that would make me think I couldn't endorse that finding? And I don't think I do, but I just wanted to, I thought it was one of the prompt to consider for anything where there's a significant and unavoidable impact. There, there would presumably be a, a statement of overriding considerations. And so if we think about it from that decision, that perspective, which is the decision maker's perspective on it, do we have everything we need? Are there any other, you know, unaddressed concerns? And I actually didn't have any for this one, but I just wanted to mention that it is sort of a lens to have on it, so.
Yeah, and through the vice chair, actually, after, after we go through the next sections, I did want to make some comments on the statement of overriding considerations, just looking at, you know, what's included in the EIR and maybe making recommendations for what could go into the final statement.
Okay, through the vice chair with that, as soon as I wake up my computer. It's not even that late, I shouldn't have fallen asleep yet. Go to the second half. Okay, the second half would pick up probably under land use and planning.
Correct.
I did not, I think I maybe had some initial questions, clarifications that I got figured out. Noise is next, right? I may have had these, noise is the next one on my list.
Yeah, land use and planning and then noise, yes.
Thank you, thank you. My only question on noise, you know, reading, ah gosh, I think I was reading the project objectives. I think talks about protecting citizens from, there's two words related to noise. It's like harmful and like distracting or something. I don't think it's distracting, it's a different word. But it, it, it was related to another question I had, which is, you know, did, when we modeled all the noise, I agree that trains and cars create a lot of it, but leaf blowers create a lot of noise. And I'll say, as someone that has been working from home throughout the pandemic, it was, whatever that word is in the project description or in the objectives that it's, we're supposed to be protecting people from, it was not meeting the standard for me. And I, so my, you know, I really appreciated the noise element. It was like an example of how you have to model things as best you can at the scale of the city. And it's not, it's not perfect, but it's the way you're supposed to do it. And so it flagged something random, like this one block, first west of B, where it's like, you know, and it's, oh, it's modeled at maximum speed, you know, okay, well, you can't get to a maximum speed, like the speed limit on that one block. And I never will be concerned about the, the sound in that one block. But it's, it's a bit of a stand-in for like, hey, there are segments of the city where it's possible that this could happen. And so I appreciate that framework, as general as it is, to try and get the issue. And I don't have any issue with that. I don't have any issue with it being significant and unavoidable, to the extent that we can understand it, you know, it's just so general and high level. But I just wondered, do we need to include leaf blowers and is there any, there's no mitigations, I just learned at, at this level, is there a policy to consider in the future around that? That was my one comment on noise. My next one, so I guess I'll skip, I'll skip parks and recreation. Population, is it population and housing? Pop two, as I wrote, impact POP two is concluding that there won't be substantial displacement of existing residents under the plan. And there's some, there's some charts in there that sort of show how many housing units we've added and how many people we've added from 2010 to 2015. And what I wrote down, I don't know if I have it right, I think what I wrote down is we added 9,000 residents and 350 housing units in that time span, which is like way more people than housing units. And so to me, it raised the flag of, of potential displacement. I think this one is probably best handled in the housing element, which is not sort of under our consideration, but I just wanted to, to flag that conclusion. I don't know if it, if it can be noted that, you know, there's pro, there's policies about this, they're just not studied here, or if it's just fine to be silent on it because it's, you know, it's just addressed elsewhere. That was my one comment there. Public service, public services under impact PS1. There's, there's a consideration about response times. So response, I think it's probably for fire departments' response times and a potential impact there. And so it listed a number of things that could impact response time, but it didn't mention additional traffic unless I missed it. So it seemed to me like additional traffic could, could cause a concern among response times. That was my one note on that one. Let's see. Transportation, okay. This one is an interesting one in terms of the thresholds for significance. So I just, I read through that one and I agreed with the approach of the city sort of using the, I think we're using the TIA guidelines or taking a, you know, sort of a target from, off of the, the TIA guidelines. It made sense to me as it was just an example of how those thresholds of significance are, can be sort of thought of, or they can come from the CEQA appendix, or they can also be kind of modified based on, on local knowledge. That, that made sense to me. I had, I had probably one comment here. So impact tran one, transportation one. We're listing off the, the parts of the, the general plan that are trying to mitigate the impact. And we quote goal C6, which has its, it's a target of maintaining efficient operations for all users. And I almost thought that, the way that was written, it could lead to a significant impact. And what I mean by that is, if you say you're going to maintain efficient operations for all users, that would be pedestrians, bikes, people on transit and people in cars. And maintaining efficient operations for drivers, to me, would potentially encourage more driving instead of encouraging mode shift. And so I wasn't sure if it was, you know, consistent with our targets to reduce VMT and if, you know, targeting efficient operations for drivers potentially would create a significant impact. So that's a question that I had. That was it for transportation. Utilities, oh, I'll say, I had no, I'm trying to do this in order, sorry, no comments on tribal cultural resources. So then utilities, it was fascinating. I learned a lot reading the utility section. If nothing else, I have learned a lot reading the EIR. It seemed that our, you know, we're, we're showing a potential, under certain assumptions and certain scenarios, showing a potential to have some issues with water supply. And it looked to me like this was all coming from the Bay Delta, Bay Delta Plan Amendment and sort of assuming the, the worst-case scenario in every possible front, it could potentially lead to certain water issues and then it, but it did not lead to be, lead to a significant and unavoidable impact. And that's one where I didn't ask, it was a clarifying question, there was maybe two in the weeds. But when we go around through this, I'd be curious if, if staff has a, a perspective on that one. Wasn't particularly, particularly concerning to me. It was just, it's one of those things where you have, you see storm clouds, you know, in, in reading through the, the analysis. And in some cases, that leads to significant and unavoidable. And this is a case where it didn't. And I was curious for any insights on that. And that was it. The wildfire one I already discussed. Thank you.
Commissioner Nugent.
Thank you. Through the vice chair, so I focused on the noise impacts as, as, you know, trying to keep, keep to the, the ones with significant impacts. From the draft EIR, I'm just going to read, while the no project alternative would result in lessened construction noise impacts, it would worsen the significant and unavoidable noise impacts of the proposed project. Therefore, overall impacts would be considered greater under the no project alternative when compared to the proposed project. So what I, what I got from reading, reading the, the alternatives part of this EIR was that the noise impacts are going to be with us regardless of whether we adopt this general plan. And it seems to me that, that, that is an important point. I wish there were better ways to reduce the noise impact. And alas, the EIR does mention that, there are. And I'm curious what we can do in the future with this general plan, not necessarily tonight, to, to ensure that the noise impacts are better mitigated through policies within the general plan and beyond. Noise is a, noise is a big impact in my neighborhood and it's mostly traffic noise. I think that it's reasonable to assume that traffic noise will go up regardless of what we do, whether or not we adopt the general plan. And that's what the EIR, EIR is, is basically concluding. However, I do think that getting people out of their cars long-term, it's not an immediate thing, it's not going to happen overnight, but long-term creating a structure for our city that gets people out of our cars does create a much more pleasant and quiet neighborhood. Because I've seen it done, like, there's kind of this threshold, like you want really quiet, you either live in the country or live in a very walkable city. And the in-between is just disrupted by cars. And I think that within this general plan, there are going to be areas that have the potential to actually have less noise over time as driving through the areas are, is less desirable, such as our downtown. And so the noise impacts are going to be distributed differently perhaps over the course. But it seems to me that, you know, while not, while significant, they're, they're also coming with the, the no project alternative as well. And so again, that seems something to highlight as, as, you know, the same as the, as the air quality impacts. You can get it one way or the other. It's not like, oh, if we don't do the general plan update, there won't be noise impacts increasing. No, it's, it is the case. And so I think that's important to note as we look into the statement of overriding considerations. And I don't know if we want to talk about that now or wait maybe until.
Why don't we wait for the very end?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. So those are, those are my comments on that group.
Commissioner Williams.
Okay, hi. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let's see, we were at land use and planning. I guess, I guess I had no comment there. I had something that, I think as I read through it further just now, I didn't, it became clear. So I don't really have any comments there. Noise, I mean, we've talked about this and I, yeah, it is a concern. And I, I guess I just want to kind of reiterate what we've been talking about and acknowledge that it is, you know, that the impacts are, are concerning. But, you know, in terms of the actual draft DIR, I, I don't have specific questions. So on parks and rec, there's a few of these ones that I made note of that they, they're slight, they're sort of counterintuitive. And as I got into them and read them, you know, sometimes I, in some of them, I didn't have, you know, didn't get into them in enough detail. And, you know, you sort of go back and look at it and you feel like, okay, I guess it's covered. But, I mean, it is, there's all kinds of backup information. Like you said, I've learned a lot reading through this. But, so for parks and rec, so I think that, my assumption was that as housing increases, the parks and recs facilities and the resources would need to be increased. Or, or my comments are that they, you know, would, would need to be handled within individual or future individual projects by, you know, requiring amenities, open space, that kind of thing. And I just kind of wanted to make the comment that a lot of times, you know, in projects, we see the developers are, for certain projects where it's applicable, they're requesting, you know, a concession for open space, for instance. And I feel like we really need to be careful and we need to look at that. You know, these projects that we see are, you know, creating demands on our parks and recs facilities and resources. So, so that's my, you know, comment on that. I think that it doesn't, it apparently, you know, isn't creating an impact, but we need to keep that, you know, in our sights as we look at projects in the future. Population and housing, I think there's several of these that it seemed like, well, doesn't it naturally, doesn't the general plan as a project naturally have an impact on the population and housing? That's kind of what it is. But again, I was kind of concerned about it when we talked about, you know, I talked about projections, I had questions about projections. But the answer, I, I think Zach, thank you for providing that answer that said that, you know, there's really no way to feasibly estimate the maximum numbers. So given that, you know, that, that these projections make sense. So that like, you know, I, I don't have any other specific comments on, on population and housing. Public services, this is another one. I had all this sort of similar comments. Specifically related to the fire department, I mean, when we, you know, we, we talk about wildfire and it being a risk, and then we talk about, you know, future development and projects throughout the city. And that is going to have an effect on the fire department and our resources. But I understand that the information, you know, provided shows that the fire department response times and the police department, kind of the number of incidents, show that it has no impact. But it does raise questions for me. I should have asked that question earlier, I had it in my notes, but I didn't ask that one. So I, I think there's a lot of information in that section. And it, it seems to sort of, you know, the, the math shows us that it's, it works out, but it raised some questions for me. Transportation, I mean, I, at this time, I, my only comment on this was kind of similar to one of the speakers, actually, as it turns out, I had a similar comment that there's a lot of things that are listed as suggested, you know, items that, in the general plan that, you know, I'm not sure how we're going to, how we're going to get a lot of these things done over time, but let's, you know, those are plan, like, plans that are in the general plan as, you know, intended or hopefully will be implemented. Let's see, tribal and cultural, tribal cultural resources, I had no comments, especially since they cite the federal, state and local requirements and the laws and regulations related to that. So I think that's another one of those places like the building code that, where these things are addressed pretty well. And then utilities, my only comment is that water is always a concern. But again, there's a lot of information in this section that indicates that we can handle this amount of development indicated in the general plan, the draft general plan. And again, as always, you know, you, it references the current plumbing code and the current, you know, Cal Green and, you know, California building codes that all already work really hard at reducing water usage and the landscape codes that are part of Cal Green. So there's a lot of hard work that has to be done to reduce water usage in new projects. But, so, you know, it's just, the big question is where, you know, do we, are we going to continue to? continue to have enough water as a state as a, you know, with climate change? And, you know, are we going to go into another series of drought years? I mean, it's, you know, climate change just has so many questions and unknowns to it, so. I guess the, the last one was wildfire. I don't actually have any comments listed on that, on that one, but I just go back to that question of, like, do we have the resources for the draft general plan for the fire department, given that we are saying that there's a significant or, or an impact? The draft EIR says that there is an impact to wildfire, and so I think we need to take note of that, given that the fire department resources will be stretched. So those are my comments on that.
Thank you. All right, I think I'm next. I didn't have any comments on land use. I had the one question about noise that I asked earlier about TDM measures, and then I just wanted to raise that there was a public comment about noise. Let me see if I can find it. It was from Adam Thompson, sent on Saturday, August 19th. It's linked on the STRIVE website. I'm just highlighting it from staff because it's a very detailed comment, and I'm sure someone is looking at it and going to incorporate it, but it was calling out that policies N 1.3 and N 1.4 seem to have contradicting information in them, and then also discusses some edge cases that might be odd. I'm, I'm not an expert, so I'll leave it to our expert consultants to look at this comment and make sure that there are no concerns there.
That, that comment is on our team's radar, and we are looking at it, and there, there are a couple of changes that'll be proposed to address that.
Perfect. And then the next one I have comments on is transportation. So there were some public comments sent in about this, and I wanted to take the opportunity to ask staff, what determines the designation of whether a road is a freeway arterial collector or local? What, what drives the classification? Is it an intentional decision to call it that? Is there some criteria or number that makes, makes those designations what they are?
I think there are, there should be definitions in the section itself that define each one based on their capacity and the, you know, number of lanes and all of that, so...
Sure. So there are definitions, that's great. Let me follow up that question, be a little bit more specific. The only qualitative measure mentioned in those definitions is quantity of cars, right? There's like 1,000 to 5,000 or 5,000 to 10,000, I don't remember the exact breakdown. So is that what determines what the classification is, just the expected volume or anticipate, is it current volume, anticipated volume, or i- is there some sort of subjective decision that is being made by the general plan to classify roads in certain ways?
I'm, no.
Okay.
I mean, it is, you know, we're talking about traffic engineers, so everything is very defined, very, so, you know, when you're planning a new city, you're going to have different levels of capacity, you know, starting from the, the residential block, then moving farther out. And so it really is just design considerations based on projected traffic demand and needs, and...
Okay.
And, and they are really defined by, again, you're right, by capacity and other features, so...
I'll be even more specific, which is, we were specifically asked in public comments, please don't designate these certain streets arterials, please designate them as collectors or locals. And what I'm trying to understand is whether we actually have the ability to do that or whether it is designated by that traffic volume. So if the cars are there, that drives the designation, and then there's really nothing we can do about it except to maybe figure out how to make, there be no cars there.
Yes, so to that point, we're not designating different classifications, those are being set at the state and federal level.
I see.
And so that, and so that's CalTRAN, so that's FHWA, and our maps are simply aligning with those officially, officially approved maps.
Got it.
So we're, we're not approving anything or recommending one class over the other, we're aligning it because there's, there's funding involved, there's other things that we have to, for maintenance recommendations, other vehicle code requirements, so that's more a function of we have to align with those state and federal maps.
Perfect. Thank you, that's very helpful. I think that, that hopefully clears up a lot of confusion. Then the next question I have is related to that. Again, public commenters noted that certain streets call for traffic calming and Class 3 bicycle facilities, AKA bike routes and sharrows. Do our current policies and regulations allow for traffic calming and Class 3 bicycle facilities on arterials? That might be, you might not know the answer to that right now. Yeah.
We can probably speak to that in more detail when we have our, our traffic and public works team at the general plan meeting, but...
Perfect.
In general, I think that might be a discussion best for our complete streets plan, where we're getting more specific. That might be a li, higher, a little bit too much detail for the general plan level, but...
Got it.
We can clarify further when our team's here.
Great, thank you. So those are my only comments on the next set of analyses, so I will turn it back to my fellow commissioners. Are there any additional comments you all have or discussions that you want to have based on what you heard?
None for me.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, no further comments for me.
Okay. Through the vice chair, the, to staff, my one question about the utility water question, sort of noting the, the potential issues raised by the Bay Delta Plan Amendment, with no assumption of efficiency increases, reducing demand, is there a, a subject matter expert that could sort of opine on where they felt like that was landing in the overall analysis?
We might need a little bit more, what is the question?
Sure. Sorry, the, the, and I can, I may have to dig up the language, but the, the analysis finds, and I think it's either for utility one or utility two, that you could have water shortages in single, I think in single dry years and in multiple dry years. But that was not, it was not determined to be sort of a significant and unavoidable Why, why would we come to that conclusion when we're modeling water shortages?
The, the quick answer is because we don't, the city doesn't manage the water agency, it's really the water agency's responsibility to provide, you know, through their urban water management plan to demonstrate their ability to provide water for the cities as they grow. So this is something that the city can't really control per se. So it's, and, you know, so that's why it's disclosed the way it is.
And I think then building on that, I, I wouldn't say that's an accurate statement, say that there are no other policies or actions that are included in the general plan that address efficiency, conservation, and getting to a target of no-net increase. So I think actually there's a suite of policies and actions that go to various angles, whether it's water efficiency and landscaping, conservation, other ways we can support our water agencies and identifying new sources. So I think it's the combination that obviously there's unknowns, there's no way to know where our water supply is going to be at, what other external climate factors might influence dry years as opposed to wet years, prolonged droughts or rainy seasons, but to the degree that we can, the combination of policies and actions in the general plan are seeking to minimize, I mean, and the goal is no-net increase. So if we can do that, we know the water supply that, in theory, we have right now, and to some degree that could be maintained. So if you then build off of that within a policy of no-net increase, that's how you, you can absorb that growth while still making that finding.
Gotcha. And I guess the only issue with that is that the Bay Delta Plan Amendment could reduce, right, the amount of water that's available.
Yes, and so that's where you have something where you're working with our, the water providers to look at what are other sources of water that could be tapped into or utilized in that case, but, I mean, with a lot of things, there's any number of what-if scenarios that, we don't know how those are going to play out, if and when.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. I don't know that I had any others I've opened, but back to the floor.
Sure. Through the vice chair, just a follow-up comment on water use. You know, water use has actually decreased since 1995, even though the population of California has increased by 10 million. So water use is affected by efficiency and other factors, so it's not, it's not just what the sources are, and again, most of our water that we have is used for irrigation, so...
Through the vice chair, what I read was that actually what was modeled was an assumption, was no assumption of efficiency increases.
Uh huh.
So that's what I found interesting, that the way we would model it is, is actually not to do all the things that you're just talking about that I'm sure the three of us are well aware of, that, that, you know, infill land use, the sort that's contemplated under the general plan, uses less water on average, partially because there's little to be irrigated, and so the, the new reach codes, anytime you build new buildings, they have more stringent water use requirements than, say, the existing building stock, and so new housing would definitely add the least amount of water per capita. And so I found it interesting that the, and I, I think I wrote this down, it was verbatim, it's no assumption of efficiency increases was, was assumed, but we have a lot of plans in the works and will continue to, to have other ones to make that more efficient. So I'm not saying that I'm concerned about the water supply, I would say that members of the public are often concerned. And actually what I was hoping to do was, was to create some, or to offer up some information to the broader public that we're actually in pretty good shape when it comes to water, so...
Yeah.
But the way it was modeled, to me, as I read it, didn't help me with that.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting. No, I think that's good. I think it's a good comment. My, my final comments are just regarding the, the statement of overriding considerations insofar as that, you know, there's, there are some significant and unavoidable impacts. And so I think some of the examples of benefits that were listed in the agenda report include increased production of affordable housing, I think that's an, an important thing to include in the statement of overriding considerations, as well as reducing VMT. And something to note, like, as far as commenters mentioned that, you know, we need to increase our public transfer use and other such things than we currently have going, but even, even excluding changing your mode shifts, people who end up living closer to where their work are going to decrease the amount of, their length of trips overall, so that does increase, that does reduce VMT separate from shifting your mode. And then another thing is, that was listed, supporting local businesses, which is also important to note, but I'd also like to see some, some key factors or highlighting the actual, the actual things that cannot be fully mitigated, like the fact that the additional greenhouse gas emissions provided by the project could very well be considered a good offset to potentially the air quality impacts that we are, we're going to see from, say, from construction most notably. And then also the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions related to vehicle miles traveled over the existing status quo general plan. I mean, I'd also like to see that it be noted that overall the, the no-project alternative would result in similar air quality impacts when compared to the project, proposed project. I think getting that information out is important for the public to understand what the kind of final conclusions are of the EIR, and if that can, yeah, go ahead.
So in addition to the statement of overriding consideration, the resolution will contain a findings of fact, which pretty much discloses all of the conclusions of the EIR itself. So to your point, those, the discussion in those conclusion paragraphs will all be highlighted as part of the findings of fact.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, and also, I didn't say it earlier, but great work. I appreciate the, the time and effort that has gone into this. Those are all my comments.
If there are no other final comments, I will also echo that this is just a very impressive document. 662 pages, as I went through it, I, I got more and more impressed as I read it. I feel like it really does contain every piece of information I would ever want to know about our city. There are so many nuggets in there, I have it now permanently bookmarked because it's such a useful reference, and so I just, I just want to say, amazing job. I cannot imagine how much time went into this. All of that time and effort really does shine through, so really appreciate all the hard work that went into this, and it, it's quite a strong document. So thank you. And if there's nothing else, I think we'll go ahead and close that agenda item and go on to reports and announcements.
All right, I was just pulling up future agendas, so we will be back in two weeks to discuss the draft general plan. That is a special meeting, it will be starting at 6 o'clock. If you want to come a little bit early, we will, there will be dinner provided, so to keep you going throughout the whole meeting. We also, the town hall meeting series continues, just to put it out there, we've got our district, District 4, or no, I'm sorry, District 2 Town Hall at the King Center tomorrow evening, and then each, each subsequent week we'll have one in District 4 and then one in District 3, so definitely encourage folks to attend if they haven't yet. Then also, going into October, we do have a lot of items to get through on the Planning Commission, including a scoping meeting for an EIR for Block 20, so you've probably heard, received the special meeting requests there to add that to the schedule. We're also looking at bringing back objective design standards, so please keep us in loop if you're unable to join for any of those meetings, because we do have a lot to get through in October. So other than that, that's all that I have to report this evening.
Great. Anything else? No, then let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.